...of the legions. Our legions to the power of the United States of America and to the freedom of our wishes stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please. Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Wilkins?
Here.
Okay, we have item 3.1, Chamber of Commerce, Eldorado Gold Week.
Hi. Jody.
Jody Franklin, Director of Tourism. Oh my gosh, my voice sounds really sexy on this thing. So how do I change it, or do you do that?
No, that's it.
Your voice is yours.
No, I don't want to. No, you sound good. We can hear you.
Oh, we thought the voice.
We thought she wanted to change your voice.
Okay, alright. So, I just wanted to point out to begin with that, that the Eldorado County Visitors Authority, like the city of Placerville, are sponsors of the World Gold Panning Championship, so I can't take credit for the success of the event because there was over thirty and closer probably to fifty committee members, grassroots committee members, that were actually in charge of putting this event together and everything, but we were sponsors and obviously we supported them from the very beginning. The reason I'm up here is because I, my whole life is reporting basically, and I'm in position to do so, so that's why I chose to come. So, first of all, the competitors, we just, I kinda wondered how we measure up, how this whole thing measured up, because we've had a lot of questions from people about, well, was it worth it, and did we make money, and all that, so I thought I would put some measurements up here, kind of dollars and cents. We had two hundred and fifty, we had five hundred and eighteen competitors altogether. Of those, two hundred and fifty-one were international competitors, and then you can see the countries there that they all came from. Finland had a really strong showing because this whole competition started in Finland, right, so, but we had about, I think there's nineteen different countries total, including the United States, that attended, so that's really, that's really great for Placerville, for Eldorado County in general. How I came up with that number, that forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight number, when you have the, kind of the industry standard for calculating visitation, if it's a daily rate per person, it's a hundred and twelve dollars; if it's a person that spends a night domestically at United States, somebody that spends the night, it's a hundred and forty dollars, and for international guests, it's a hundred and sixty-eight per person per night. So that's basically what we attribute to people that spend the night. So that's where we came up with forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Again, the domestic number was two hundred and sixty-seven, that number included the, there was a VIP challenge, there was a volunteer challenge, we took those numbers out of it, the mini minors challenge and the VIP and volunteer challenge. I didn't attribute any money to those people, those were probably residents, so they probably spent some money while they were here, but that twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars does not count those people. Only the people, the hundred and seventy-three there at the top, those are the people that accounted for the twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, that's at a hundred and forty dollars a night, overnight visitation.
So, once we get our hotel, it's gonna be even higher.
Well, that, that's included, that's what they attribute, so that's a really-
That's county.
A conservative amount, so, but I like to err on the side of conservative amount rather than blowing any numbers up, I just wanna make sure that you know I'm just not throwing numbers out there, this is, this is what they come up with, what I've come up with. Unpaid editorial, this is where you've made your most money. We experienced so much press over this, stuff that we didn't pay for. Now, the Visitors Authority, we paid for some, but that's not included in that total, so the way they figure out unpaid editorial, for instance, San Jose Mercury, they do a page on us, so however much it costs to advertise in the San Jose Mercury, that's what you attribute towards how much paid unpaid editorial we got. So, Channel Three, for instance, if it's on at noon, you know, it's a five hundred dollar spot, if it's on in the evening news, it's a little bit more, so what I did there, and that's all industry standard, I didn't make this stuff up, Sacramento Bee, Group Tour Magazine, those are the ones, just the ones that I kind of kept track of, and we do this on a regular basis for the county as well, so those are, you know, these were all times that we're saying Placerville, 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 gold panning, Placerville, Placerville.
Thank you.
So, really, I just wanted to kinda show you what your investment was for this, the money you've leveraged on that. That was our big get, the three hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, that's a big number. Those broadcast TV stations, I can't afford, the Visitors Authority can't afford to pay for that, that's really expensive stuff. So when we had this event, it was so unique and singled us out that it was quite profitable for us. Okay. Volunteers, we had over two hundred plus volunteers, over four thousand volunteer hours, the price tag on that, forty thousand dollars, that's attributing eight, ten dollars per hour to volunteers, but really, most of those positions, I would say, not most, I would say at least twenty-five percent, up to fifty percent of those positions were leadership positions, where, for instance, the person that's in charge of getting the sponsorships, coordinating, managing all the sponsorships, and you can see later, we have a hundred and twenty-six of sponsors, different sponsorships they sold, so that person, that would be a thirty an hour job, we attributed ten dollars an hour for them, so that's another very conservative estimate, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold, that we, that we attributed to, to this event. Lodging, I can give you the, really, the handout, it's kinda hard to see, but we, we, we polled the lodging properties, I think it was August twenty-ninth, and then we, again, on, or the week of, the gold week, we actually polled the lodging as well. Those were only the lodging properties that were on the shuttle route, so you, I'm sure you knew that we had a shuttle that goes to ten different properties, well, the city of Placerville had forty percent of those, so four different properties were in the city of Placerville. So, the weekday occupancy, then we kind of averaged them out in terms of percentage, the weekday occupancy, fifty to eighty-six percent, it averaged in there, weekend occupancy, really high, ninety-five to a hundred percent, both the weekend in advance and the weekend after, that's, that's really great stuff. I also, just because, kind of geek this way, I pulled out an estimate of what the city of Placerville got out of that, I took your lodging properties, the Gold Trail, Motherlode, Carey House, and Best Western, Placerville, and their, took their percentages, how many rooms they had, how many percent was full, and then averaged about a room cost. The room costs for during those weekends before and after were actually a little higher, because once your, your occupancy goes up, so is the price, right? So I estimated really low on all those occupancies, but it looks like a hundred and fifty thousand, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in lodging benefit to this, to the city of Placerville only, that's just the city of Placerville, not the, not the Eldorado County lodging properties, so that's, you know, that's a chunk of change. Mini minors days, these were, this was Monday and Tuesday, we had sixteen hundred students participating, more than sixteen hundred students participating, that, they went to the different stations, and I think there was nine or ten different stations, it was unbelievable, everybody participated, the Marshall Gold Discovery, Goldbug, everybody participated, it was awesome. Over twenty schools participating in that, so the Office of Ed actually took care of that for us, excuse me, so that was a great number, and I tell you, those mini minors are going to be our greatest advocates later on, right, so this is Gold Rush history that we're kind of prepping for, the future, when they start taking care of us. Transportation, excuse me, we had eight hundred and fifty-six riders, they rode a total of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight miles. Those were the shuttles that, that the Visitors Authority wrote a grant for, the stay and play shuttle through the air quality management, so we got people off the road and on those shuttles. We had one shuttle specific to Placerville, the city of Placerville, that rode every thirty minutes from the fairgrounds, Goldbug Park, Main Street, fairgrounds, Goldbug Park, Main Street. That running constantly, every thirty minutes after, after they dropped off for the morning, we had one going down to Coloma and back, and then, and then during the parade, then we took one of those shuttles and then brought them down from city, from fairgrounds. So again, that's just leveraging the money that you've spent, the investment that you've made in that, in, you know, through grant money, through us, you know, it's just, anytime you can get an ROI like that, it's very exciting in my opinion. Social media, this is not specific to the city of Placerville, I know the Goldbug Mine had their own campaign, and which did unbelievably well, that's a really good social media platform, Facebook for Goldbug, but we saw some pretty incredible numbers as well. Our Facebook reach was fifty-one thousand, we didn't put, I didn't put any money to this because, you know, how much money do you put to, there is an industry standard, but I just don't, I just don't believe in it, putting money into somebody going to your website, right, so, we didn't, I didn't attach any money to that when I did the ROI figures either for the county or for you guys. The Facebook average engaged user grew, three hundred and twenty percent, so people were talking, they were talking about this, both online and in the papers, obviously. Instagram engagement, this was really great, that's three hundred and twenty-five percent, that increase, it's a very visual, it was a very visual event, it was visual before, it was visual, you know, it was hard to get as many visuals as we needed for this, so during the event itself, unbelievable, we had some great images, I hired somebody to get some more images, so if we wanna do this again, we're packed for bear. And the social media traffic increased twenty-five hundred percent over two thousand and fifteen, that's just pretty dang incredible. We did a pretty focused effort on the Facebook campaign, San Francisco, in that area, Bay Area, and it was pretty dang effective, obviously, people were talking about it, and that's the kind of thing that, you know, if they came or not, they were still talking about it, so they, they may not made the trip this time, maybe it didn't work out for whatever reason, but they, we put them on the radar, we put ourselves on the radar, so we're hoping for future visitation that way. Let's see. Sponsorships, like I said, a hundred and twenty-six, they had a sponsorship for almost every single level you could think of, mainly because they wanted everybody to be able to participate in some way, have some sort of stake in this, and I think that committee did a really good job of that, everybody, there was, there was a price range for whomever, and, and I think that's, that's really great, that they were able to get that many sponsors, that many committed folks. And, these are the things that aren't so easy to, to measure, one is the collaboration benefits. I saw people sitting at the table that don't like each other, that never sit at the same table, just an unbelievable, I've never, I mean, it seems like we, I constantly am collaborating in one way or another with one organization or another, that's kind of what the Visitors Authority does, but never before have I seen so many people from so many different levels, really important people to people that have never volunteered in their lifetime, coming to the table and offering whatever they had, you know, their, their expertise in whatever it was, I've never seen it before, excuse me, and our sense of community, our, our community pride, you know, this was something we could hang our hat on, and the minute, you know, the ladies that were in charge, the coordinators, they called up the aha moment, the minute you got that aha moment, you know you nailed them, right, you, the minute they let, oh my gosh, oh my, you know, it was just, it was, the sense of community was really, really, really great. The international, excuse me, the international exposure, as you well know, there's not a lot of diversity here in Placerville, okay, I've said it, and just to have everybody welcoming this international community, I mean, it could've gone in the way on us, right, it was awesome, just, they were embracing, they were bringing their kids out and showing them, you know, what the, the, what Japanese garb looks like, the kimono and everything, it was just, everybody, every, the families came to the fairgrounds, and they were talking about, I talked to an Italian person, and somebody from this, and somebody from that, so I just think the benefits there is not measurable, but absolutely, you know, benefit to us. Elevated exposure for the future, and that's kind of where all that unpaid editorial comes from, and what I was telling you, you know, I was hoping for ten thousand people come to the fairgrounds, and I doubt ten thousand people came to the fairgrounds, but I have no doubts that two to three years, we're still gonna be riding this type, we're still gonna be seeing the benefits of this, because Eldorado in general has never had that, that exposure that we could call our own, you know, we got visitation from the gold country, we got the gold country paid attention to us, Visit California's paid attention to us, where we haven't had that before without really trying, so I know that we are going to see some, some benefit from this in the future. And then, oh, I wanted to tell you one other thing, the, we have two journalists, this is an example of that, so since that time, I've got two journalists in December, which hardly ever happens, it's not a key time to visit Eldorado, usually they go up to Tahoe, so, two people, two journalists, both family, family journalists, one I think is from Trekkeroo, and I forget what the other one's from, but anyway, they're going to Goldbug Mine, they're going to Marshall Gold Discovery Park, and then they're gonna go to, up to Apple Hill for like a half a day there, so, two different ones in December, just because of the relationships we've made during, during the event. They didn't come to the event, they put some sort of splash on their blog or something, but now they wanna come here and say, okay, we're missing out on something, we, we wanna know what's going on. And then finally, my voice holds out, doesn't sound as sexy as it did when we started, I wanted to tell you about Misty Tinkins, yeah, she is the district representative to the state Senator Ted Gaines, and she told this story, and I just thought, wow, where do you put the, where do you put a price tag on that, so I wanted to share it with you. She was raised by her grandparents, and she hadn't seen her dad since she was twelve, and so she got involved with this because, you know, we were trying to get the politicals involved, and she started talking to Rich Mason, and as you know, he's a pretty influential guy, he'll just, you know, doesn't give up, so he wanted her to come, wanted her to come gold pan at this thing, and she said, well, you know, funny thing is, my, my dad was a professional gold panner, and he's like, oh my gosh, we've gotta get your dad here, we've gotta get your dad here, and she said, I didn't tell him, I hadn't seen him since I was twelve, and so, he wouldn't, he wouldn't let go, it was a dog with a bone, he wouldn't let go, you've gotta get your dad here, he's gotta see this, so she, she went on a quest looking for her dad, she finally found him like, a week or, or just about a week before the contest, got him into it, so he participated, met up with him, told him what, what the deal was, long story short, he participated, oh my gosh, it's a new lease on life, he loves his daughter, now they've got a relationship together, all because of this event, you know, how can you put a price on that, right? I'm like, oh my gosh, what a great story, that never happens, so anyways, I think there's a lot of those stories out there, not particularly that story, but a lot of those types of things out there that we can't put a price tag on, yet we've put a price tag on a ton of stuff, so, there you go. That's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, I know I went through this kinda fast, I want you guys to get to the rest of your evening and not be gone, huh huh huh, so, absolutely, you can contact me if there's something I can find for you, info or whatever, just let me know.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That was fabulous. Actually, Jody, I have to tell you, that is the best recap-
Yeah.
-we have ever gotten, I think-
Yes.
-on, on an event. I love the metrics, the measurables, you broke it down clearly, this was so darn helpful and impressive-
Thank you.
-and really, really appreciate this, and it helps us also, you know, as we talk about events and envision what the possibilities are for us in the future because of this kind of data, so-
Absolutely.
-I can't thank you enough for this.
Sure, you're welcome.
Fabulous presentation.
This, I agree with Wendy.
And your enthusiasm, I love it.
I can't hide that, sorry.
It's so important because we're dealing with the folks of the community, and when we, you know, if we donate whatever in kind, or the big bucks or whatever, or little bucks, we need to account for it, so this is, like Wendy was saying, this is just so important that we see the results and we can say, hey, this is what we, this is the bang we got for our buck.
Well, absolutely, whether a person came into a merchant and bought a specific little thing in there-
Absolutely.
-you know, it makes no difference, you know, they've got, we got the people here, there was people here, and there's, there's money, there's money here, whether you made two hundred dollars or you made two thousand dollars.
Exactly, and the exposure was worth it.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, item 3.2, California On Location Awards. Recognition of Steve Yule.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'll introduce this item, and then Steve can add to it.
But wait.
Oh.
Laurel?
No, there's Laurel! Sorry.
Laurel, are you going to introduce this?
With your permission.
Sure.
I have the Cola magazine.
Is Steve's picture in there?
No.
Not yet.
But I brought a prop. It's a Chamber of Commerce kinda night. You got the B team because our film commissioner couldn't be here, and she was with Steve at the event, but I think that, and this is the Cola magazine, but I think it's really important, this is the big show for Hollywood, this is Cola and Flix, and they do their big annual, and it's all about the Holly weird, it really is, but the opportunity is there for one federal representative, one state representative, one county representative, and one city representative to be recognized as the outstanding county, federal, state, city representative of the year. So we were very, very fortunate, we had four nominees that made the finals, and we had two that won, and our own, our very own Steve Yule from the city of Placerville Parks and Rec was one of those recipients, so we're so excited about that, we wanted to make sure that we got that word out to as many people as possible because it truly is the big show, and we're gonna get to see that right now, I think. Notice the Steadicam following him to the stage, there's a Steadicam, this is, this is Hollywood, and the size of that room is just incredible.
Tell him where the location, it was.
It was at the Holly, um-
Beverly Hilton.
Beverly Hilton, thank you.
The same location where the Golden Globe award-
Right.
Notice the big screen behind him.
You look good, Steve.
I just really felt it was important to share with you the significance of this award because it really is an honor, and it's won many, many, many people throughout the state of California that were nominated, so we-
Laurel, tell us, I mean, really, what, why? What's the award for, is it film location, is that the, the basis of-
It's for the support and cooperation with the Film Commission.
That's, that's what I wanted.
Yes.
And, and for our little town, and all that.
Yes, yeah, and it's for the support and cooperation.
And we're talking about economic value there, too.
Total economic value, you betcha. The more film friendly we are, the more economic impact that our Film Commission makes, which is about between one and seven, one to nine million dollars a year of economic impact, so, and a lot, a lot of work is done on Main Street in Placerville. So I personally wanted to honor Steve and thank you for your support, and for the support of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank Kathleen.
Now, does Steve get to say anything?
Can I mention a couple of things?
Yes.
We'll let Steve make his speech again.
Yeah, yeah.
He, he does have his award down here on the desk, if you'd like to look at that, he can, he can display for you.
It's a beautiful award.
So, this was, this was a little bit of an ordeal, getting Steve to the award, and we have some, I won't tell them now, but we have some good stories that Steve and I had in making this happen, but it is a great, great honor for him to win, I was just gonna mention, he was up against the city of Los Angeles and the city of Hawthorne were the other two nominees for the award, and so we, one in a few times, we beat out Los Angeles and Hawthorne, so, anyway, congratulations, Steve, good job.
I just have to say, Steve, this is a huge honor, and we're just so proud of you, and, I mean, I'm just kinda speechless, that, that the city of Placerville would, you know, would show so well in the state of California against LA, I mean, that is just awesome, it shows what assets we have in, in this town, and you are the keeper of those assets, and so, thank you so much, that's just remarkable, well done.
Thank you. I think it's more a testament to our whole staff, citywide, Kim Nida with the Police Department, Bob Pine in our Parks Department, Matt Lishman and his crew, the Goldbug Park volunteers, it, I was really honored to represent the city, because it truly is a city award, it's not Steve's award, it's all the people that make it happen. Kathleen just happens to call me and ask for a favor, and then one thing leads to another, and everybody gets involved to make it happen, so, my only words of wisdom is if Kathleen asks for a favor, ask lots of questions. No, it's just, sincerely, it's just great to work with so many people that are behind it, and understand the importance of our relationship with the Film Commission and what it actually brings to the city, so, it was my pleasure to represent the city.
Thank you, Steve, you're very humble. Okay, brief comments by Council, we'll start with Mark.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
I think we already commented.
I would like to make a comment, last week, I got to participate in the Citizens Academy graduation, which was really quite something, I was honored to be there, basically, for folks who don't know, we actually did something about this last, at our last meeting, where we recognized the folks that participated, but this is quite a commitment of time and energy by both the participants, both the citizens who involved, and it's a way for them to get to know the police function better, they learn a little bit every week about certain aspects of policing and, and how the folks in the city do what they do, but it's also put on by the, the police officers themselves, who put a lot of time and effort into it, they, they miss a lot of Thursday night activities, depending on what time of year it is, it's usually football, but it's also time away from their families, but the, the award ceremony, or the graduation ceremony was, was quite a kick, and, and you could see that probably it was a lot of good education and learning about how the city police function works, but it also looked like they had a pretty good time while they were doing it, and I was just honored to be asked to be part of it, and, and it was funny, I mentioned to them that it would be nice if we could do this with other parts of city functions, it would be good to have like, somebody telling them about public works and the, and the Park and Rec Department, because, and other functions of the city, because the more the citizens get to know about how their city runs, A, they'll understand it better, but B, they almost become ambassadors, and they, and both in a positive, and you know, they can also say, hey, you know, I heard something about this and I didn't like it, you know, but I think that, that it just, it just makes for a better relationship between the city function, certainly the PD, and, and the community, and so, I, it was a great experience, and I was very pleased to have been asked to be part of it, and I got to shake a lot of hands, which is always a good thing for a politician, so, but it was great, and, and hats off to the, to the PD and all the folks that put on over the, I think it was eight weeks or nine weeks, eleven, I'm sorry, it was eleven weeks, it's like, so, yeah, it was great, anyway, so that's my comment.
Wendy? We had no closed session this evening, and adoption of agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any, on any matter not on the agenda, that is, within the subject matter jurisdiction. in any mo, in any matter not on the agenda, that is, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special acts and action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. The mayor will recognize you. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Do we have written comments? I'm going to open up, Laurel. Anybody wish to speak?
Good evening. Carl Hagan, resident of Placerville and business owner in Placerville. One, I want to thank the citizens and this council for bringing forth Measure L. We did it. We had 75% plus turnout in favor of Measure L. I know, after sitting up there for 10 years, how important this is going to be for the future, for the next 20 years in Placerville, to be able to do some major renovations. Our infrastructure is failing, crumbling, getting old, like some of us that sit on the council and/or have sit on, sat on the council and/or, or city manager former. Not the current one, he's a young guy. But I'm, I'm working on it. But, but seriously, the pop, the, and I, I know you've said it, John, in a, in a letter to the editor, or I think some of us have also said the same thing. Mark has said it at different points, but we need to respect the citizens of this community and move forward with these projects and, and do it in a very open, transparent manner as we have all, you know, last 10 years have been very transparent in my, in my, in my mind, but there's been some people that don't think so. But I think the public trust us, us, you, to move forward. And I think that's going to be key, that we do that and we, we bring forth some great projects and, and some small projects. We've got a good project going in over here on Sacramento Hill. I understand we probably have run into more problems there than we realized, but that's what's underneath these streets. There's a lot of stuff that's underneath these streets that are kind of old and ancient and I'm sure Steve runs into them on a daily basis. But, but again, thanks for your support. Thanks for letting the citizens have a vote on this and bring it, bringing it forth the way we did.
Thank you for your help, Carl, also. Thank you.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and treasurer for the residents for Measure L Committee. We were a committee that was registered with the Fair Practices Political Committee. We followed all their rules and we got out there and talked to people and our citizens said yes. 76% yes. That shows a huge amount of trust in the effort that was put forward and a realization of what we need to do for our city. That, yes, we do have $40 million worth of projects that are going to be done, $2 million at a time over 20 years. And they were happy about that. And as I stood at the farmer's market and handed out flyers, I could count on one hand the people who said no. Everyone else took a flyer, most, and some of them just gave me a high five. I already know about it. Yes, we're going to have support this. So it was a, it was an effort from lots of places and I'm glad that the city realized that this needed to be done, got it on the ballot for everyone. And so our, our thanks to you and our thanks to the citizens of Placerville who voted it in.
Thank you for your help, too.
Good evening. Mickey Kaiserman, resident of Placerville. I also want, I concur with Carl and Sue what they said. Measure L is a great measure and we're really happy that it passed. I want to thank the city council for putting it out there as a measure and for the citizens for voting it in. But I think we really need to, when we go forward and go through these projects, we have to make everyone aware of what projects were being made and funded by Measure L. And I think it's really important that we display that somewhere in the city and either through the water bills or Old City Hall, a list of these projects and what additional funding we received by leveraging these funds so people know where these dollars went. So I want to thank you again. Good night.
Thank you also, Mickey. So we have the signs that we put up, Measure H, maybe Measure L projects can have a similar sign?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely do that. I think that was a recommendation that came out of the Measure H committee that those signs go up. So we'll, we'll do that.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. And we have the consent calendar.
Tricia, could I real quick say something? I particularly want to, want to thank that committee on Measure L because if it wasn't for them, this wouldn't have happened, I don't think. They were so diligent and they worked so hard and they gave so much time and effort and I really, really think that they made this all happen. So, thank you.
All matters listed under consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of full text of all resolutions will be waived unless council member requests otherwise. I'm going to open public comment on consent. Anybody wish to speak on a consent item? Okay. I'm going to close public comment.
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Wilkins?
Aye.
Okay. 12.1. Bicycle racks. Yes. Provide staff direction on how to proceed with the purchase and placement of bicycle racks in the downtown area.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, last year, when we were doing the planning for the Main Street Downtown project, we identified things such as trees, bike racks, benches, et cetera, and a lot of those. We, for funding reasons, we eliminated many of those, of those three items specifically, but identified that we would look at them at a later date. As you know, we've been, getting a lot of questions about the, the bike racks. And so I thought it would be appropriate to bring that forward, to have this discussion and determine how we might move forward with this. Again, I want to iterate, reiterate, the reason they were taken out was for funding reasons at the time. This is not a big cost item. As you can see what I presented, I've given you the, the map that shows the locations that were proposed in the initial plans. And for those that, if you can't see on that small map that I gave you, those would be at the crosswalk. They're all located in the, the bulbouts. The first would be at the crosswalk in front of Robinson's Pharmacy, but on the south side of the street at Robinson Pharmacy. So it'd be the southwest location. Yeah. Yes. The second is at the crosswalk going from Central across the street towards the Candy Store and it would be located in front of the Candy Store, I believe also, that would be the southwest location of that, that corner of the bulbout. And the third is at, what's the description of that one? Farther up the street, kind of at the hardware store, a little bit of east of the hardware store. The light, right, by the lighthouse, this store there. And that one, again, is on the south side of the street, southwest location of that bulbout. So those were the three. And then we also looked at, probably should look at perhaps one at Town Hall, here at this location somewhere, and one at the garage, perhaps down at City Hall. So those were the locations as we reviewed this further that we would look at. Looking at the cost of the actual bike standard, well, let me go back first. When we reviewed these, you recall when we were looking at what we were going to do in, in the design, we did a survey and looked at what, what style or what we would like to have. They presented two styles in the survey and the style, the one is the one that I've given you a copy of in your packet, which is a Ballard style bike rack. It's also been noted that Jack Russell Brewery installed this style of bike rack at their location. And I believe one other store has also, yes. So, and, and the results of that vote, I think it was around 75%. I think those survey results in here also voted in favor of that, that bike rack. So with that, the, the only remaining piece was how do we, how do we fund it? It's not a large amount, but if we put in five of those in these locations, I estimate without installation, it's about $1,500. Not real difficult to install. I think our Public Works crews could do that. Steve's probably looking, I mean, not another one.
And that's for how many?
That would be for five of them.
For five?
Yes. So $300 each, five of them would be $1,500 to purchase those and then we could have Public Works install them.
Well, I think the value, $1,500 bucks for bike racks for people, yeah.
Now, the, the other part that I want to mention, in the report, I've mentioned that we were looking at potential funding through TDA funds, right? Dave, yeah. And we actually have, Dave, we just went through an audit with the Transportation Commission. We have some funds actually that we weren't sure where we're going to go, that were remaining from previous projects. And we, we're still working a little bit on that, but we believe that these funds would be able to use for these. So that would be a funding source that we could go ahead and move forward with those if the council's desire is to approve these locations and, and also this style of bike rack. So with that, if you have any question about the funding, Dave can answer that and I'll open it up for questions with council on how we may want to move forward with this.
Just to be clear, for five of these, it's $1,500. And installed, we think we can install them for that amount? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's not 75.
300 each.
I'm going to pass this down. I, I saved this. These were some of the other options that the people had to vote on. There was a historic, kind of different, some of them.
Those were not, those were not to be bike racks. Those were, remember, we looked at installing historic artifacts.
Artifacts, but I thought that was interesting.
In addition to those.
And that's, so that brings up my next question. Are we going to install anything else? Because I think we need to know what else is going to go. Pretty soon, we're going to have those, so full, you know? So what else is planned?
There are still locations that are identified and you can't see them very well on the map that you have here, but if you look at the big map, the drawing over here on the wall, there are other locations that are identified for having benches, historic artifacts, et cetera. And those, those, and, and trees, and those were spoken of a little bit in our last meeting under public comment. So all of those locations are still identified on the drawing and we could move forward with them in the future as we see, you know, the, the funding permits and how we may want to move forward with it, so.
But at this time, the bike racks are the only things that are going to be?
That's all we're proposing, at least tonight.
You going to buy one?
And you know what? What's this, what is the, I don't see the, the dimensions. Where, does it tell somewhere? I see that, but how tall? And how many, and how many bikes can be hooked up to one of those?
Excuse me. Normally you would hook two bikes up to one of those. However, you could do more. For example, if there were two people that were together, they could hook theirs together on one side.
Oh, so each, each, this is just for one?
It could accommodate, but...
One, one bike, really? I mean...
Well, normally you would do one on each side.
All right. Okay. This, I guess I'm questioning, is that enough? From what we're hearing, there's a lot of people want to park their bikes. So that's what I'm, and I'm sure we've got some audience members who are going to tell us, but I, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious to know whether, I mean, we're talking five of these. So that's 10 bikes, really. And is that enough?
I would mention also that I believe Central puts a bike rack out sometimes during the day now, as I understand, just during the day and then they bring it back in, just in front of their place.
Well, why don't we talk to the advocates?
Yes. I'm going to open up public comment on item 12.1. Would you like to come up here?
John, you're elected.
Thank you, council. I'm Tom Compton and I've been before you previously on this issue. The staff report had five options for the council and I want to advocate a combination of options, two and three. Option two, because the city should proceed with installing these bike racks, whether or not third-party grant funds are available. And then on option three, because I think that the, the estimates of $300 per rack and up to $2,000 or $2,500 total are conservative, that is, that they're high, I think that the city can do it for less than that. Several months ago, I was in front of you and I gave you cut sheets for various models for bike racks, including the Ballard style. And if I, I didn't bring those with me, but if I recall correctly, only one of the models I showed you was even more than $200. So I think the cost estimates may be a bit high per rack. Secondly, the racks that are proposed for the city council, or, excuse me, the, the parking garage near the city hall and for Town Hall, really don't need to be aesthetic. And in fact, you might be better off in, in the parking garage with a, a schoolyard type rack that could accommodate a lot of bikes. So that if we have underestimated the demand for bike parking, there's lots of bike parking in a quiet place, under the stairs in the parking garage. Those are typically the cheapest types of bike racks around. And then finally, I'm quite sure that city staff can install these. It's really a matter of drilling a couple of holes in concrete and bolting them down. I think a couple of city workers in a half a day could install all, all of these. So for all those reasons, I think the costs can be reduced. And then finally, if the council is interested in this, the, the bike rack that you mentioned in front of Central is actually put out there by the cyclyry. He's doing that because it suits his business to do that. Some of these, you have the possibility of sponsorship, either by businesses, organizations or individuals, and with sponsorship, perhaps a little financial contribution that could also reduce the city's cost. So all of those things, I think, should be considered as possibilities for reducing the cost of this. I really don't think it will be an expensive endeavor for the city.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. And while not currently a bicyclist, my daughter is. And when she comes to visit, one of her complaints has been, "There is no place to lock up my bike in all of Placerville. How do they expect me to enjoy my hometown if I can't even put my bike anywhere?" And these were on the original Main Street plans and I think we should have done them at the same time. Since we didn't, I certainly think we should do them now. So I'm thinking, yes, you guys, it's time. You got around to it. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Sue.
I heard something earlier that in, in the city manager's report that's interesting, we probably have some TDA funds available. And this would be some of the things that you could use to reduce the cost. And you couldn't use that TDA funding for a tree, for instance, or a bench. Maybe a bench. Rest area for walkers. Old guys, you know? But...
There you go again.
Anywhere. That's me I'm talking about, as an old guy. But seriously, if that funding's available, let's look at trying to finish some of the other products, projects, a small bit at a time. And certainly putting a name of a service club, the name of, of a bicycle shop or whatever on some of these nice-looking billiards with a small plaque near the base or near the top, whatever, makes sense. And Steve is pretty good at, at grinding some of the local service clubs from, for getting some funding to help do that and offset it. The cost, we still have to pay the city employees that, that do this. So there is some additional cost and we probably have to buy some special... cost, and we probably have to buy some special bolts from the hardware store. But let's, let's work on this, and let's, Dave, come up with a few, what, what money's available and, and what isn't? And, and if, like I said, if, if it's some extra money we've got in there. I know we cut off this project, and cut off this, and the trees, and a couple of other things, because it was very tight budget toward the end. We did run into a few underground issues, I'm sure, that drove the cost slightly above the, the bids. So, anyway, my opinion.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. I have a question. So, so we have these beautiful ones, or the ones that people chose?
Yes.
This?
Yes, that one. Can we have, like, the, um, schoolyard that Tom was talking about, like, in, like, the hidden areas?
You're asking me, that's up to you. You have to do whatever you would like, Mayor.
Have you explored that?
We, we've seen those. I mean, there's two, two views on it. One is, you know, do you want to be consistent with those throughout the city and the style?
Well, no, not like, not like in public view.
The, the aesthetic-looking ones, do you want to be consistent with those throughout everywhere? Or, I, I understand what you're saying, and that's not a bad idea to consider.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Hidden where you could have them.
Yeah, I mean, parking garage, nobody's gonna look there. You can have, like, ten, or whatever.
That's what I was thinking, too. They'd provide a lot more.
Okay, comments?
I think we should do this, and obviously, in the more aesthetically sensitive parts of our community, the one that was chosen, I like that, we could stick those, and that would be like, four or five? Is that the five? Are five in aesthetically sensitive?
Five pretty ones?
Five pretty ones?
That would be three.
Or is it three?
Be three.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. There's three, because one of them would go by city hall or, or by the parking garage, and then the other one was...
Let me do the ugly ones.
I, I think we could probably find some aesthetically...
They're standard, they're, they're not ugly, they're standard.
I bet you we can find some aesthetically not obnoxious volume racks.
They're not obnoxious, they're just bike racks.
I understand that. Um, okay. So, I, I think it's a great idea, I think we should do it. I think we should help out our bicycling friends and help them bicycle all over town. So, basically, what, we could make a motion to purchase three of the chosen ones for the downtown, please, Mr. Thomas. And then maybe provide staff with some guidance to go off and get two more industrial-type bike racks that are volume bike racks for the other two locations, so that we could potentially have more bicycle parking available within some sort of constraints in terms of budget.
And you know, if we, if we, I'm gonna just tag onto that.
You tag away.
If we see the need, if we're finding these that are a little less costly, we might even then...
Prolongate.
We might find a need to put them elsewhere.
I think once people start to figure out that they can bike, hook up, lock up their bikes in town, there'll be a lot more demand for them.
I'm thinking, just more off Main Street, I mean, further, maybe up on Upper Main, you know, or even on Lower Main.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes. I think it, I think it'll definitely be an idea that catches on, and then we'll be looking at putting them in different places. And let's face it, after you get between probably Sacramento Street and Bedford, no one really cares what they like.
Exactly, that's the way I feel.
It's like a lot of stuff.
So, if that was a motion, I'll second it.
Well, I don't know, it was a pretty fuzzy motion.
It was kind of, you said motion, and so it's like...
Well, yeah, I think we should buy three for downtown of the ones that were selected.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, let's not get carried, get too far ahead of ourselves here, and then buy some volume racks with an eye to some level of aesthetics for the other low, two locations, where they will not be on Main Street, and, but they can have more utility in terms of volume, and just give them, staff, direction to do that. And the only question is, do we want to say, keep the volume racks under the unit price that we're estimating for these things?
I don't think we can, well, yeah, it would be under, we can't, until we really know.
Well, ugly is cheaper than pretty, so...
Yeah, but larger, sometimes...
But they're larger, and...
Capacity is, is what's important here.
Yeah, capacity.
I, I trust our staff to have a reasonable approach to this. My only question is, on the volume racks, Steve or Cleve, could they perhaps be powder-coated the black to at least match the Ballard styles? Yeah. And that would, that would be, you know, add some consistency. I mean, they don't have to be, like, disgustingly ugly, but...
We were talking about this, it's like we're hanging on any...
Oh, good.
Yeah, that was the other.
Just quickly, in, in the proposal that went on the survey, there, they were actually that, a dark green, like the, like lampposts. It, it doesn't come out in this color, it didn't print out that color, but it was actually the, I forget what it's called, but a dark green.
Right.
Whatever they voted on, that should be the ones on...
And if it could, if, if the volume racks could at least match the, the color and style, that would be great.
The scouts are bailing out.
As far as the discussion on the sponsor...
Pardon?
That's right. As far as the discussion of the sponsorships on, on the bike racks, always a, a good idea. However, I would favor, you know, the same people donate all the time to our, to our cities, and with our ability to perhaps channel into TDA funds, I guess I would, I would like to perhaps reserve the sponsorships for the trees or the benches, or the later amenities that might not have, you know, potential grant funding. So, can't keep going back to the same, same well over and over again.
Question on that.
And my other question is, I'd like to ask the council's opinion on this. If we're looking at the three Ballard-style bike racks, initial, initially, with the two positions opposite, Central basically and Robinson's are in front of the bank, are those perhaps too close to each other? Although that is in the middle of our city, and I sure understand that the proximity to restaurants is what's going to be probably, you know, important with that. I wonder if perhaps the one in front of River City Bank would be better served down in front of the Carry House? Would there be a need at the Carry House for a bike rack? And perhaps, Steve, was that, was that a location explored at all? I mean, I'm good either way, because bike racks will be used, but...
I'm not sure if it was explored or not.
Yeah, this was mostly done with engineering, and, and I, I will say that it was somewhat based on where there was an available location for them.
Okay.
One of the concerns that I had, and, and I can maybe look into it a little bit more if you'd like us to, is that all of them are located on the south side of the street.
Right, right.
I don't know if that's a huge deal, but some bicyclists drive down the road, too, ride down the road, so I don't know if that's a big issue, but maybe we could, could look at, I, I think it would be a matter of flip-flopping, maybe one of those, um, other things that might be a historic artifact.
But if we have one in the parking garage, that's on the other side of the street.
It is.
Yeah, that's true.
But anyway.
I'm good with the, the dynamic.
I'd like to suggest...
Wanted to ask a question.
That we went... I think we should buy three and put them up, and then see how it goes. We can always buy more and stick them in other places if this thing really takes off. My suggestion would be, though, is that we put them in the places that we said we were going to put them when we went through the public process, and then that way, people will have seen the maps, they know where they were gonna go, and then we won't have to listen to, oh, those crazy people on the city council decided to stick them anywhere they thought that it was be okay. So, we went through a process, we told them, Pete folks, we're gonna put bike racks in certain places, let's put them in those certain places, and then, when we have like forty-seven bicycles attached to each one of them, we can then say, hey, this is a great idea, let's go put one up the street and down the street.
That makes sense, yes.
And in fact, probably what will happen is, we will have people begging us to put bike racks out in front of their businesses, so. That would be my suggestion. We just stick to the plan, stick to where we said we were gonna put them, let's get started.
Okay, so you did the motion?
I did.
That was shady, okay.
And what was the motion? The three approved, and the two is multi-bike?
The, yes, the, the three ones like this, in the places we said we were gonna put them. And then two more...
Industrial.
Industrial, large, volume bike racks.
With the same sort of powder coated or dark paint finish?
Whatever they are, yeah. I don't want to get wrapped around an axle on this thing, even a bicycle.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll second it again.
Well, no, go ahead.
No, I have a couple of questions. One, will the TDA, using the TDA funds that, I totally understand that, but what kind of a time delay will that it put this to? In weeks and months?
Dave, can you answer that? I don't, no, I don't think it will be, but...
The, the cash is in your coffers.
Right.
So, you would just need to appropriate those dollars for this specific use.
Because we won't have to go to the Transportation Commission, we won't have to put it on the transportation state. Okay, good.
It just has to be a legal use for those within the fund.
John Driscoll is smiling down at the end, so this is good. Thank you for that. Secondly, if, let me ask a question to Steve. If we were to get another multi-use bike rack, has there been any demand for one down, or maybe there is one already, down at the Ivy House parking lot?
Yeah, I think that Ivy House parking lot, you know, once the improvements are made down there, we should definitely have one. Yeah, that's probably the busiest spot.
That's what I'm thinking, down there.
That's what I've heard.
So, should we buy, so, here's my thought. We've heard from Tom Comston a couple of, on a couple of occasions, where there's probably better prices out there than what we came up with however long ago. So, I'm confident that staff is gonna do this under budget, because the costs are gonna be significantly less for both types of bike racks. So, once we finish this phase, then we can look at seeing to putting one up at Ivy House. They could be moved, I mean, even if there is a project there, it could still be moved. And also the Fox Lot, down there between the brewery and California Kitchen and the bank and all of that. Is there, right now, we don't have a spot, but maybe we can find one, and we'll have saved the dollars, that we'll have them to, to add a couple of more.
What about the Park and Ride Lot that's going in? Are they gonna put one there?
Well...
Is that in the plans?
Well, as you recall, that's now part of the, the hotel project, and so we, we're still working on plans for that, but...
On lower, the lower, Lower Main?
Yeah.
On Lower Main?
The Park and Ride, the...
No, there's a Park and Ride at Mosquito Road that we're working on.
Yeah, but I'm not thinking, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of lower, I'm thinking of, like, the trail down there. I see a lot of bicyclists in, in that area, too.
Well, they do ride on the trail, but I don't know that, except, with the exception around where the, the yogurt and place is and that, or, that might be a location.
Well, you know what? Like we said, we'll find out, you know?
Let's let Steve do his, get his, get his good pricing and get them installed.
Get them in.
So, I would call for the question also.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Wilkins?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I, can I, I thought maybe Patty, yo, thank you! But we'll get Tom Comston's name on one of these. Money saved by Tom.
These, the scouts are out there going, is this really how the government runs? Because this is kinda scaring me.
This is not like this on Fox News.
Scout leaders have to take them out and go, nah, that's different, really.
Well, we're on the subject of completing Main Street, or of our Main Street project, and getting all the little accessory pieces into it. The, it has been brought to my attention by several people, you know, what are we gonna do about the trees? What are we gonna do about the tree holes? We heard at a meeting, one or two meetings ago, is it a smart idea to dig holes in our street and put rooted things into it and cause, you know, new problems in our infrastructure? Would it be appropriate to, at some time soon, look at, I had had the suggestion of putting street trees in, but putting them in containers? So, it would be a very compact, very vertical tree, it would sit above the ground in a decorative container, and you would lose all of those concerns. It guarantees you're going to have a very specific type of tree that isn't gonna impact the buildings, the roots underground, the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. So, just a, just something to think about as we go, because that is gonna be the next thing, is, once spring comes, and we have those holes down there on the north side of the street, people, when are you gonna do something?
Well, and I, it's definitely gonna change the, when we voted on the choice of trees, it would definitely, I think, change the type of tree, because you'd have to put a smaller one in than what these that were approved. But I think it's something to think about.
Thank you.
Okay. Thirteen. We did not have a transit meeting. Was there transportation? Okay, Latka?
We meet on December the seventh.
Okay, Secog.
We had a Secog meeting, and then we had an Innovation Task Course meeting after that. The Secog meeting was pretty brief, but one thing that did, everybody, because it was just after the election, everybody got to tell their war stories about how they had, did or did not do. The seventy-five percent passage rate was a pretty large, we might have been the highest for anybody that passed something. Several school bond passed, and there was a couple of sales tax measures, but they were more budgetary-type, general-type tax measures that went into some of the communities. But the two that were the most, the biggest, and actually were excruciatingly close but did not get there, was Sacramento County's extension, actually in addition to their Measure A, which would have been another half-cent sales tax, which would have brought their Transportation Authority tax to one percent, failed by, I think, something like fifty thousand votes, which seems like a lot, unless of course you consider it Sacramento County.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot.
And it was like sixty-six point five, or sixty-six point four.
It was very disappointing.
To, yeah. Placer County's was equally close, theirs was a little bit, a bigger margin, but not a lot, it was like sixty-four or five. And what happened in Placer County was an interesting thing. Apparently, it was, it did very well in the Lowlands and then Roseville, and up, and then once they hit Auburn, all the votes started to flip the other direction, and by the time they got to Tahoe, it was losing. And so, they were not happy over there, and Celia McAdams was not happy at all about that outcome, so we should feel very good about that. The other thing that happened at the Innovation Task Course, which is interesting, and why we should always feel blessed that we live in this wonderful town that has a life and a pulse and, and, and nice things going on, it would, they, there were presentations on two streetscape, two street revitalization projects. One was for the town of, oh, gosh, it's gonna get away from me, not Winters, Winters. And the other was for Rancho Cordova, the, I think it was Rancho. It was for their Auburn, their Auburn Boulevard, yeah, Auburn Boulevard, or Folsom Boulevard, or Folsom Boulevard Improvement. And Folsom Boulevard Improvement. And Winters, they're doing really nice things, and they had this gal come in from Portland that, that threw one of the grants, it was a Secog grant that they got her to come down and forget.
They've done a great job.
And they've done a nice thing, but it's still like, they really had to work at it. They got a lot of community support, and they have done some very nice things in town, in their town. And I've actually was there not too long ago, and it was much nicer than the, like, I'd been there like several years before. And then, of course, Folsom Boulevard is kind of what it is, but they're really working at trying to get some unity and some thought and some identity around Folsom Boulevard. And I was just sitting there thinking, thank God we don't think about, I mean, we don't have to build that sort of thing in this town, it already exists, you know? The Main Street doesn't need to be revitalized, it's already vitalized up as, as much as probably, you know, i- it's, it's quite vital. The town itself has a lot going on, and as you sit there and you listen to these stories, it's gratifying that other people are managing to put something forward, but you do realize how, how lucky you are to live in this town, where we have things to do, but we're building already on a fairly successful situation. So, it was, it was, it was nice to, nice to see, but I sat there and sort of thought to myself, how lucky we are that, that, that we live where we do. And then, of course, with Measure L on top of that, we'll be able to actually do some very good work on the infrastructure and the roads and whatnot, which will make the town look even nicer. The one thing that occurred to me as I was listening to all the nice folks that got up and talked about the Measure L Committee and all the hard work they did and thanking the city is, one of the things we're gonna have to get really used to in this town over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, is a lot of construction activity. I mean, we're gonna start plowing an awful lot of money into a very small space, and I mean, we're gonna start plowing an awful lot of money into a very small space, and so, you know, it's, 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 I mean, it'll be a happy thing to have to deal with, it'll be, it'll be an issue that'll be fun to have to deal with, but we're gonna get very good at talking to our community about the next big construction project in their, on their street and in their neighborhood, because it's going to start happening in a large volumes here in the next, certainly in the next few years, and then for the, for a long time up into the future. So I was just thinking about how, given, just not the total daily activity in town, we're going to be building things, which will be fun.
Well, that's what kept happening, because I kept getting these, you know, complaints about the Spring Street project. And I kept saying, "Just think of how great it's gonna be in the end." Tricia, I wanted to, I back up to transportation. I did attend a CalCOG meeting, and that's represented by people from up north, Clear Down South, and John, I ran into the same thing, because they had us do a roundtable and tell something of importance that went on in there. And I was so happy to be able to tell of our importance, and there were a lot of disappointed folks that their votes didn't, that they didn't get. So, but it was very interesting, the, the, they particularly, you know, they're the state capital, they're working with everybody all the time on a daily basis. This is why we have CalCOG and why we've hired the guy that we have to represent us. But their take on this transportation issue, and I know we keep hearing about how, "Oh, as soon as the election is over, you know, funds are gonna come forth and da-da-da-da." That's not true. It's still, the, the fighting is going on, and thank goodness we did not sit back and wait for that kind of thing, because it's just, right now, it's looking like it's not gonna happen, and what is out there is not gonna really, even if things do loosen up a bit, they still can't figure out how to raise money. I mean, they, you know, they're fighting over the, they fight over everything, you know, the left and the right, and it's just ongoing, so, and it doesn't look like it's gonna get any better, I'm sorry to report, so.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, John, I just wanted to correct us on that. It was commercial corridor reinvestment work in the city of Citrus Heights.
Citrus Heights, I knew it was one of those places down there. It's all, it's giant megalopolis down there, they all, you just go from one place to another.
And isn't Auburn Boulevard one, one of their streets that they're working on? I mean, it's, it's in the Citrus Heights jurisdiction. I remember hearing that when I went there, yeah.
Yeah, way on the other side.
And they're really working to improve that, too, because it's, it's a terrible-
But it's hard to make a personality when you don't really have one.
You bet.
You know, and I, and it's no dig at that, I mean, there just isn't, you know, I mean, it's just, it is what it is.
Well, yeah, it's a lot of, yeah. But they're trying to improve it and do away with what has been there.
Oh, yeah, no, they're, they're doing a lot of good work. Yes, they've done a lot of good work on that project, and it was rather interesting to see how you spin things up and, and actually have good results.
Right.
So, no, they've done good work, it's just nice not to have to deal with it.
Okay. Request for future items. Anybody? Wendy?
I'm, I'm thinking about our next meeting in December, and I know it's jam-packed, and it's also celebratory time, but I'm, I'm thinking that we should, we should recognize Lisa Crummett at, at our December meeting.
I agree.
She is retiring and leaving the PDA.
But I didn't think you should announce it.
It's gonna be a surprise.
Never mind.
Don't tell her. No, I meant recognition.
Oh, sorry. Well, cats out of the bag, but, yeah, we, yeah, so, if you, if you need help with a proclamation, or, it's important that we recognize all of her good work and efforts on behalf of the city, I think for the last 17 years, I mean, it's remarkable what she has, how she has benefited our city. And lastly, Cleve, not necessarily report for future agenda items, but more of a question. Where are we on the sales tax sharing process that we embarked on a couple of months ago?
We are working slowly on it, behind the scenes. We've had a couple of meetings on the staff level with Robert Liberty from Portland State and also with Greg Chu from SECOG and with Don Ashton of the county. So we are working on some things. They have, the county has committed a new person from the CAO's office to help with it. It's been kind of slow lately, but we're working on getting that back up and going. Probably after the first of the year, we'll, we'll kick back into it again and get it going.
Okay, all right, great.
We are making progress, but it's been kind of slow lately.
Sure, all right, well, that's nice to hear, progress is being made, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, staff reports?
Yeah, this one is just briefly, we had told you we would prepare a brochure regarding chickens.
Chickens.
And Pierre Rivas, his department, the Development Services Department, has prepared the brochure, and they are available on the counter at city hall for anyone to learn how they can have chickens.